The call to Tuesday, March 13th, 2018, work session of the Portsmouth City Council to Water. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Semus?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Mayor Rowe?
Here. And Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, our first presentation this evening is a presentation of the Regional Economic Forecast for 2018. Each January, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission Economic Staff prepares a regional economic forecast for the coming year, including a review of local and national trends. The forecast includes an assessment of what the region can expect for the coming year. Through your request, we invited Mr. Greg Grootendorf, Chief Economist for HRPDC, to present the HRPDC 2018 Economic Forecast. The second presentation, entitled "Active Shooter", is presented this evening by Sergeant Scott Blaststone, a member of the Portsmouth Police Department for 15 years, with 12 years serving on the SWAT team, and the Sergeant of the SWAT team for six years. The presentation connects with a definite need which cities, counties, businesses, schools are conducting across the nation as a result of the recurring incidence of active shooter violence. An article in Sunday's Virginia Pilot by Dennis M. Watson, entitled "With the Plan You Can Be Your Own Hero," and that people need to think of themselves as their first line of defense, which Sergeant Blaststone will help us to understand in such situations, not just depending on law enforcement. The city of Portsmouth is conducting active shooter forums that have been held starting Saturday, January the 20th, at IC Norcom High School, and we've had subsequent sessions continuing throughout the city with civic organizations and school presentations. Tonight, members of City Council, it is your turn to learn how to be prepared. All of the department heads have been through this training. The last presentation will be an offshore drilling overview. Offshore drilling is the federal government's process for offshore drilling. The Bureau of Ocean Energy Management is currently developing a five-year plan for an oil and gas leasing program. The draft proposed program includes a mid-Atlantic planning area and Virginia. The Hampton Roads region is collectively opposed to offshore drilling due to the potential for negative impacts to the region. This overview will provide a snapshot of the process and why the city must remain knowledgeable and engage in this process long-term. We will begin with Mr. Grootendorf.
Thank you. And as you come to the lecturing, I'm gonna... might embarrass you, but it's intended. As many of you know, the state organized itself into some more than 20 planning districts in the late 60s. And I contend that the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission is the gold standard, the standard that others should emulate. But especially in the area of their economic reports and the forecasts that's done, it's really top quality and very, very cerebral work. And thank you for what you do for the region and what you do for Portsmouth, and thank you for being here.
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Dr. Patton. Always a pleasure to be here. And so, kinda, you know, what I'd like this to be is more conversational. Please interrupt me at any time, point out things, question as you will. We do these economic forecasts, and I hate economic forecasts because there's really no way of knowing what's gonna happen in the year ahead, much less a month ahead. We've got a continuing resolution that expires really soon, and sometimes, you know, a week or two ahead is really a stretch. So when we say, well, we're gonna forecast for the year ahead, it's not the forecast, I think, that is so much beneficial. It's kind of understanding the lay of the current landscape, what is important and what things we might look forward to, what challenges might be. The word forecast gets thrown out there too often. And really, you know, I've said before, there's really two types of forecasts, lucky and wrong. And, you know, with that, I'll start. You know, one of the things that's interesting about Hampton Roads, up until about a decade ago, Hampton Roads, what happened in Hampton Roads typically tracked what happened at the national level. So when we saw things going up in the nation, we said, well, that's what's gonna happen in Hampton Roads. And up until a decade ago, that was true. Recently, in the last 10 years, that's not true. We could see, we go back looking at gross regional product, we've had pretty strong growth at the national level since 2009. GDP is up, again, this is a national level, 20.1% from the pre-recession low. We're looking at employment nationally. We're nine million above where we were, grown essentially 1.6% at the national level year over year since the recession low. Unemployment rate, we're lowest unemployment rate, and it's reduced by over half since the pre-recession high. We're down to 4.1% at the national level. And then, well, the stock market is a little crazy, but essentially, the S&amp;P has averaged 15% growth annually since 2008. And you can see, you know, we've had some ups and downs a little bit in the market, but essentially, we're up 71% from the pre-recession high and almost 260% from the pre-recession low. So when we're looking at the national level, national indicators, things are looking relatively strong. We see consistent growth, relatively strong growth, and historically, that would have assured us that things are going well in Hampton Roads. Unfortunately, things in Hampton Roads have not been going as well. Now, I got a second to speak to the mayor before the presentation, and I'm gonna jump through some of these slides. The life of an economist is based on data. And so, when I submitted the presentation this afternoon and when I had prepared it, everything was all good and great. And Friday, they release all new employment numbers. And one of the great nuances about when you look at federal data is sometimes you can actually access the data earlier, and I accessed it today and it was posted. And so, a lot of my numbers are not gonna be wrong, are not gonna be right. Well, they aren't right, but come Friday, the data changes rather significantly. And I'll just kinda gloss over this. There's been some significant revisions. It doesn't change the story going forward, but it certainly changes some of the history that's in here, and so you'll have to bear with me a little bit. But I can speak to these trends still. If we look at this chart here, essentially, what this is showing you is, when the recession started, you have the green line, which is for Hampton Roads, the black line is for the nation, and the orange line is for Virginia. And a couple of things you'll notice is, the green line for Hampton Roads is longer than the other two lines, is because when you go back to where the Great Recession started, for us, it started before anybody else. It actually started the month the Ford plant closed down, 2006. That was our pre-recession high in employment. Since then, we have not recovered all the civilian jobs lost. We have, we have not made it back up to this red line here. Nationally, the black line, they recovered all their pre-recession jobs back in 2014. Virginia, the orange line, they also recovered all their jobs in 2014. And you can see, they've had consistent trends towards recovery, and the green line has bounced around a bit. Well, bounced around a lot. Now, I'm just gonna cut in front of you here. One of the interesting things that came out is when I looked at the revised data this afternoon, this little downward trend that we see here, that resulted in us being 19,000 jobs below our pre-recession high, actually got reduced to only being 4,000 jobs below the pre-recession high. So this data has not been actually released yet. They just...
But we're still lagging.
We're still lagging, just not near to the same degree. But we're still under that line. So what you see is, we're pretty far behind the nation and pretty far behind the Commonwealth. This data is still relatively legitimate, but essentially, what this is doing is, this is comparing us to every other metropolitan area with over a million people. And as of yesterday, when we looked at the data, Hampton Roads actually came in dead last. You have Buffalo there, Rochester, New York, New Orleans way on this end, Dallas, New York, LA are seeing a lot of job growth. But Hampton Roads compared to other metropolitan areas, right here on the end. Now, with the updated information, we've slid out to over here. So it's better, but we're still way, way on this far end. Now, if I change these dates and said, well, what has been the growth change over the past decade, we're still way on that. In fact, we're second last. So relatively, compared to the nation, compared to other metropolitan areas, Hampton Roads is not doing well at all. And if I look at the changing gross product, here, we can see it again. New Orleans, Tucson, and Memphis are way on kinda the losing end here. And you see San Jose, Austin, San Antonio, Raleigh, Nashville are seeing significant growth.
Were that far behind Richmond?
Yes. We don't wanna compare to Richmond, though. But yes, we're... and I'll explain why. I mean, there's reasons for all this. I'm gonna gloss over this a little bit quickly because some of the revision really impacts this data. But if we look at what's happened with employment over the past decade, we see growth in health and healthcare, federal government management. The growth in federal government is especially important for Portsmouth. This is really, really important to Portsmouth specifically, and Hampton Roads in general. On the losing end, we've seen losses in retail trade, construction, local government manufacturing. So you can see how this is parlayed into each of the industries. Now, this data, I won't bemoan this, but essentially, retail trade and leisure and hospitality, as I've been talking about, a lot of what we saw in these losses really didn't mash with our other data. And so, for the last few months, I've been questioning these two data points. And it turns out, that data essentially got erased with this revision. So retail and leisure and hospitality is flat, which goes along with the rest of the presentation. But the point here is, you know, year over year, when we're looking at industries, it's not consistent above, across industries, so you might have growth or decline. Each industry is realizing the impact slightly different. And again, the one that Portsmouth is really gonna be looking at and concerned about with most is federal government now. Well, we're looking at the unemployment rate. What's important here is not so much the rate itself. If I tell you the unemployment rate in Williamsburg's 10%, you know, and nobody thinks Williamsburg's doing terribly poorly right now, the rate, unemployment rate is essentially meaningless. The components of the unemployment rate and the trend is what's important. So here, I'm showing you the trend and what you can see. The U.S. actually went up to 10% unemployment, and there's been a long and consistent downward trend in unemployment. This is nothing new, although, you know, some people take credit for recent things. This has been a long time coming. Hampton Roads, you can see the same is true, the trend in Virginia as well. So the unemployment trend in Hampton Roads is certainly going in the right direction. Our current rate of 4.1%, you know, the unemployment rate could go up next year. It's not necessarily a bad thing. Essentially, we've gotten down to where we were pre-recession. So we're not in a bad spot. We're not in a great spot. It's just the trend, again, being the important factor. When we look at jobs and employment, this is kinda what's interesting. We look at this green line here, that's the labor force. And you can see the labor force is kind of, in Hampton Roads, has gone up, it's gone down. But in the last three months here, we've seen a drop in both the labor force and in the number of employed civilians, the people who are saying they're actually holding jobs. And this is, this is relatively interesting because this is, we're not quite sure why in the last three, four months, we've seen this drop-off, and we hope to get some clarification in the coming months. But again, if we go back to the unemployment rate, when we're looking specifically at them, here are the number of people who are unemployed in Hampton Roads. And when you see that decline from back when we, in 2010, it was 65, almost 66,000 people, we're down to 34,000. And these are people that call up, they say, you know, do you have a job? Yes or no? It's called U3 unemployment, but it's the normal way of reporting unemployment. But essentially, 34,000 shows that the trend is going in the right direction. If we see a bump here, that would be a leading economic indicator that would tell us that something is going wrong. Speaking of leading economic indicators, these are initial unemployment claims in Hampton Roads. Initial unemployment claims are, if somebody loses a job, they're gonna file for unemployment. When they do that, that claim gets registered, and it's the leading economic indicator because it typically tells us before anything else what the market is bearing and where we are. We have the lowest initial unemployment claims on record in Hampton Roads. So again, a positive indicator in the sense that the economy is not necessarily going, the initial unemployment claims are not gonna tell you when robust growth is happening, but they're gonna start sounding alarm bells pretty quick if things are going in the wrong direction. And the fact that they're at their lowest point on record tells us, we're not seeing spikes in unemployment. A couple of things that we are seeing in Hampton Roads, taxable accommodations in Hampton Roads, or tourism, which is, you know, one of the legs of our economy. It's not going gangbusters. It is a, it's a very mature industry in Hampton Roads. Tourism is vitally important to the region. But being that it's mature, I mean, the beaches have been here for a long time. The historic triangle's been here for a long time. Essentially, the assets that we have aren't new. It's not like you planted in Walt Disney World right down here. The assets that we have have been here for a while, and they're very important, they're vital to the economy. People continue to use them. So we don't expect robust growth, but at the same token, any decline in that is gonna hurt our economy. Right now, we have the highest accommodation sales on record. So we're in a good spot, but this is not an area that we expect to see large amounts of growth for. It's just a staple of our economy, and we, you know, if we can expect it, slow growth like we have seen, then we're doing pretty well. When we look at retail sales in Hampton Roads, we could see, we've seen some significant increases from where we were. Retail sales is one of those things where it's really indicative of how well the economy's doing. If people have money, if they have jobs, if their incomes are rising, they're gonna spend that money. And when they do spend that money, some of it's gonna come back to the localities to fund the operations of government, which is, of course, important. But it's, it's very indicative of well-being. If people are unsure of what's happening, you know, if you don't know if you're gonna have a job next month because the federal government hasn't made up its mind, or if there's a lot, high degree of uncertainty, it's gonna be reflected in retail sales. The moment you're uncertain about something, you're gonna hang on to your pocketbook, your wallet, and say, I'm not gonna hold on to that dollar. I'm not gonna buy the lawn mower, or I'm not gonna invest in a new roof at this point. And those hesitancies are gonna be reflected in retail sales. So what this is showing us is, since 2010, we've seen relatively consistent growth in retail sales. Again, this isn't strong growth that you'd wanna hang your hat on, but it's consistent growth. One of the cautionary things that I would say here is, when we look at retail sales, this is, this is a really, really important component of government coffers. And when we look at retail sales and income, we can see there's kind of a disconnect. So this black line is personal income, and the blue line is retail sales. This is going all the way back to the 70s. And for the most part, they went kinda hand in hand. As your incomes went up, you spent more on retail. In recent years, past decade, however, there's been somewhat of a disconnect between retail and income. People are spending a lot more money now on services than goods.
Internet.
Well, that's a great point. In the internet, the internet is actually not included in this. Most of the internet sales now in Virginia are taxed, roughly 80% of them. There's a federal law going through, might actually pass this year, that would make 100% of them taxable. A decade ago, you know, 95% or even higher, closer, I think, 99% of internet sales weren't taxed. But since Amazon began taxing, a majority, not all, but a majority of the purchases, and other agencies with a footprint in Virginia had to start collecting tax, most of the retail sales, you know, if you go on something right now and you buy some shoes on Amazon, there's a good chance that when it comes to your door, Portsmouth will get a cut of that tax, and Amazon will record it as long as they do have a footprint here in Virginia, most of them do. So this, this is something a little bit different. What this is saying is, people aren't tying their income to retail purchases as much, but they do to services. So people, you know, you're spending more money to get your hair done, at least my wife is. You know, you go get a massage, you go dentist, whatever it is, whatever legal services, people, people in the service community are seeing a lot more sales. But in terms of the amount of shoes, people buying, t-shirts, that kinda thing, purse, whatever it is, we're not seeing that as much. And one of the reasons that this is important, and I wanna kinda stress this right now, is that when we look at our tax structure in Virginia, it's very agrarian based. It's based, you know, on 100 years ago of how probably we should have taxed things. And it doesn't make a whole lot of sense right now. So if somebody goes to the spa for the day and spends a couple hundred dollars, they'd pay zero tax on what they just did. However, if you go buy diapers and milk, you're paying tax on it. Well, why would you pay tax on diapers and milk but you don't pay it on your spa? So there was a, a report that was done a couple years ago out of Thomas Jefferson that said, if we taxed services, we could bring our tax rate down to 1%. We could drop it from 5% at state level to 1% if we just taxed services and remained revenue neutral. And that might not hold true today. In fact, it might be... but that gives you a sense of, you know, if you said, well, I'm gonna take your tax off the shoes and the clothes that you buy, and some of these retail, or watch, or computer stuff, and I'm just gonna apply it evenly to include things like your day at the spa, or, you know, go to iFly Virginia Beach or something, I'm gonna include those things. And the tax rate gets reduced drastically and broadened, which is a much better way to tax, because it reduces the influence that tax rates have on certain things. And the reason I bring this up now and I'm making this point is because, when the current administration, the Trump administration passed a tax law at the federal level, it opened up an opportunity for Virginia, because Virginia is one of several states that conform to federal tax law. And so, when the federal government changes their tax law, the state has to do so as well, because it's part of our tax code. And when the state goes to change tax law, it gives us an opportunity to say, hey, perhaps we should stop, talk about actually changing our tax law and update it to, you know, the 21st century, in terms of how we tax, what we tax. You look at things like B-Pole taxes, which are way outdated. You look at some of our current tax rate structures, which are extremely outdated. So this might give us an opportunity to actually look at, say, how do we rearrange our tax structure, or could we rearrange our tax structure in such a way that we modernize it, that we make it more vertically and horizontally equitable, which it is not right now? And also, can we do it in such a way where Portsmouth isn't competing with Norfolk and Chesapeake and Virginia Beach for tax dollars? Because when you're competing against each other, you know, essentially, it's a race to the bottom. Y'all remember the boat tax? I mean, things like that, you can have a race to the bottom that real quick, that doesn't help our localities work together, but essentially pits them against each other, which is very tough work for city managers to kinda reconcile when you're trying to work with your neighboring jurisdictions while at the same time holding your own. So this would be a great opportunity for this region to get together and the state together to kinda address some of these.
Is any of that difference between retail sales and incomes generational?
It would be tough. I mean, some of it will be generational. You know, I think there's a complexity of factors that go into that. You know, a lot of people like to throw the term millennial and say, the millennials are so different than, than the rest of us normal people, you know, beards and man buns and whatever else. The reality is, when you look at how different spending patterns for millennials, it's less tied to the generation than socioeconomic factors that surround them. And I'll give you an example. There was a lot of people saying millennials don't want cars. It wasn't so much that millennials didn't want cars, it was that they didn't have a job, they didn't have kids, so they're changing their, their spending habits based on, you know, having children a little bit later, which generation after generation has done. But when you didn't have a job and you stayed in school, then you had less opportunity to get a vehicle. And the funny thing that happened, as soon as we saw the uptick in the national economy and millennials started getting jobs, guess what? They bought cars. So it wasn't the millennial component, it was a socioeconomic factor that was more the difference. And so, there's subtle differences between millennials and, you know, every generation, the greatest generation, the silent generation, generation. There's subtle differences between them all. But I think people really blow up the differences between them. The reality is, most generations are pretty much the same. They go along in different stages of life, and they're gonna wanna, you know, what my mom wants right now is very different than what I want now. And when I'm her age, assume I'll be a lot like her. So...
We have a question over here. Dr. Whitaker?
Just a question back to the previous slide that you...
Uh, this one?
The disconnect between the income and the retail sales you were speaking of, as cities are trying to attract certain businesses, have you noticed across this trend, even though you may have a decrease, are there particular retail goods that are increasing versus this overall decrease that you see?
Absolutely. I wish I had a slide with me that was more to the point, and perhaps I could send it to Dr. Patton to forward on to you. And essentially, it shows, among retail categories, much like industries, it's not constant. So some industries are seeing growth, food and drinking establishments for one thing. They're seeing growth in other areas, such as automobile parts are seeing declines. So depending on what retail industry you're in, you might be seeing growth or decline, you know, and based on one, five, 10-year trend. You know, not that the previous year's gonna dictate the future year, but essentially, you know, as a society, as we change, some of the stuff that we're looking for, and some of the stuff that, you know, we rely in, how often you buy a fridge, you know, you used to buy a fridge once every 40 years, now you gotta buy it every two years, because they don't last any. You know, some of the electronic stuff might step up. Well, some of the apparel might drop off, or we spend less on apparel, so that changes pretty significantly across.
So you could disaggregate those figures?
Well, we couldn't disaggregate it here to tell, to say necessarily, this income is gonna be responsible for this change among retail category. But you could say, here is the difference in retail category, the trend line in retail category. Does that make sense?
Right.
So here is, actually, this is actually what I wanted to show you. So here is the change in, in retail sales by business category. And if you look at where, where we are seeing growth, like I said, food service and drinking places, we're seeing increases. Health and personal care scores are going way up. Incidentally, sporting goods, building materials, electronics, appliance stores, we're seeing decrease in, in retail purchases. And this is over, this is from 2007 to 2016, in a 10-year period. So there's significant change, right? We're going from 58% all the way down to negative 36% in terms of change. So depending on what category you're on, some are seeing growth, and if you're looking to land stores...
Wait, is that because we're buying less clothes and electronics and appliances, or because we're going to Wayfair and Amazon and...
So this would be, this would include Wayfair and Amazon and all those things. This is essentially what people are buying. And it's not the amount necessarily that you're buying, like, we're not buying less clothes. But clothes have become a whole lot cheaper. You know, I remember when I was a kid, a pair of jeans cost more than it does now, right? A lot of clothes have come way down in price, and some of this stuff is gonna be reflective of prices.
TVs, computers.
TVs, computers. You buy, you know, you spend less to get more, actually, and in some of those areas, except for dishwashers, they're horrible. But computers and stuff, you're spending a whole lot less to get a lot more, so you'll see a decline there.
Let me, if you go back. So where we see this decline, is it, and you, like you say, forecast, prediction, you don't know. But this, this is, this is changing so rapidly. When we look at furniture, and then you're talking about clothing, and will this, will that ever return to what it was? I mean, furniture stores used to be everywhere, and now you can tell the two places that you can go and get furniture. So it's been just a constant decline, and will...
So here's the, the only constant is change, right? I couldn't tell... I couldn't tell you how these things are going to change because I, you know, I don't have that crystal ball that's going to, I know it's going to change, but as culture and society kind of changes their, their buying trends, you know, your guess is as good as mine as whether furniture and home furnishing stores are gonna.
That would come back.
Come back to the, you know, essentially you look at it, well, I assume, you know, in 20 years, we're all still going to sit on couches and chairs, right? So you don't imagine those things are going to go away, but how people purchase these things might be different.
Yeah.
And how they're used or reused or their longevity might change and that's going to influence, you know, the, the retail component of that. And that's why essentially when you look at these things, right, it's very hard for government to come in and say, these are, these are good ones and we want to invest in them and these are bad ones and we don't want to invest in them because we see growth here, not there. You know, that's what's beautiful about, you know, the, the private sector. They figure this out real quick. If it's profitable, they'll invest there. If it's not profitable, they won't invest there. But essentially, we're going to continue to see change in this and you're going to see urban planners and regions continue trying to guess, like, what is the best way to attract people to a destination? You know, when you talk about livable cities, you, the redevelopment of urban malls and retail areas to attract people to make a destination focus or they come in, I mean, constantly that is going through cycles to try and get at that question.
The health and personal care stores, I mean, as the baby boomer boomers, we get more, I mean, but we're going to all age at some point in time, but is that a factor of health, of health insurance or healthcare or, I mean, all, all of it's wrapped up in there?
Yes. I mean, there's so many things, you know, it's, it's, there's a cultural component to it, there's an aging component to it, there's an interest component to it, and there's also the, you know, cost of a lot of these services has increased. So all those factors are wrapped up.
Can you go back to page 14, slide 14? We were able as a state to tax services. It seems to me it would make the sales tax less regressive. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we have a horribly regressive sales tax in this state. So just to, to be clear, all sales taxes are typically, even if they're on services, they're typically, it's a regressive tax, whether you apply it to services or just retail goods. But if you focus just on, on the retail side and not on service, it makes it even more regressive. So if you expanded it to include services, it would decrease its regressivity while still maintaining it as a regressive tax, if that makes sense.
Yes.
But yeah, and that's one of those things that we would like to see because, you know, regressive taxes is essentially, you know, it's, it's uneven, the impact that it has on people with disparate needs. So a regressive tax means that if you have limited income, you're paying a higher portion of your income towards that tax and somebody, you know, if, if, you know, if Mayor Rowe is making $200,000 and I'm making $10,000, we're both consuming the same amount of bread. So the tax that we pay on that bread, for me, is going to be a higher portion of my income than it would be for Mayor Rowe. So that's where sales taxes and service taxes are going to be regressive, but it's much more likely people with higher income are going to use services, you know, especially spas and those type of things. Good point.
On the slide where you had previously showing the growth, the next one.
15.
Right. The, the measure of growth that you said that was based on quantity or dollar amount?
So both. Essentially, it's expenditures, right? And expenditures are going to be based on both quantity and price. So this is, this is what we're seeing, you know, if you, if you're spending more on it or increasing the quantity, that's what it's, the combination of those two. Does that answer your question?
Well, if it's, because some of those measures of quantity, because you were saying earlier that cost of goods are decreasing, so you could be purchasing more but realizing less in dollar amount. And I was just curious if that was captured.
Yeah. So it would be, it would be the combination of those two. It's essentially how much are you spending on it? You know, so independent of the price or consumption, it's those two combined, the price and the, the consumption amount are giving you your expenditure pattern and it's tracking expenditure patterns. Any more questions on retail before we move on to something that's also very significant? Housing in Hampton Roads. Essentially, what we're looking at here is, as everybody's familiar with, housing in Hampton Roads has, has seen some significant changes over the past decade. We saw a huge decline following the housing bust and then this, this very kind of flat green arrow showing single-family building permits. You know, one of the things that we're just happy to see is, is that we're out of the red arrow part because the decline in housing prices is, is incredibly difficult for local governments to deal with. And one of the things that we saw in Hampton Roads that was a little bit different, this black line again is the nation, orange line is Virginia, and the green line is Hampton Roads. And this essentially showed what happened in housing prices, right? So if we go all the way back to 2000, we see, wow, everybody hit this peak right around 2003 at the same time. We saw housing prices skyrocket. Some of this stuff was national factors that were there. Everybody had, you know, access to easy credit, low mortgage rates and easy credit all over the nation. They call them these ninja loans, no income, no job, get a loan. So everybody had access to credit, everybody could get low mortgage rates. When you did that, you opened the floodgates and everybody came to buy a house. So that was true for the nation. What was a little bit different about Hampton Roads is at the very same time, we had housing prices that were undervalued. So there was more, more room for housing prices to go up because for a long time, we had undervalued housing prices. And then we had the Department of Defense expand housing allowances to military personnel significantly. So the Department of Defense basically shoved money in for housing allowances and that fed right into our housing increase here. And then on top of that, federal government gave significant increases to personnel in terms of pay rates. And that money cycles through the economy, indirect and induced effect. So we had an economy flush with cash, money shoved in for housing allowances on top of already low mortgage rates and easy access to credit. So that's why Hampton Roads saw such a boom in housing. And then it crashed along with the nation and the Commonwealth. But the important part here is what we, what we didn't want to do is remain below this red bar because when we remain below the red bar, housing prices decline, that creates a huge, huge market of uncertainty. It's uncertain for local governments in terms of what they can expect from year to year in terms of revenues, but it's also really, really difficult for people who are stuck in houses. You have more and more people underwater in their houses and it creates a real drag on the economy. So even tiny, slow, moderate growth is really, really important for the economy to move forward. And we look at housing in Hampton Roads in general, it's relatively healthy. Now, it's not going gangbusters, don't go run out and buy a house, but it's healthy. Number of existing homes is up 4.6%. New construction is the highest it's been since 2007. Existing homes are highest since 2005. We have relatively low inventories, which is good. Average days on market is 71, which is healthy. We went way, way, way up during the bust. Single-family building permits are up 7%. Single-family value is up 8.5%. All of those in green are strong indicators. This red line at the bottom is really the one area of concern. We still have a relatively high portion of distressed homes on the market. Distressed homes are ones, bank-owned homes, foreclosures. They can put significant downward pressure specifically on neighborhoods, right? If you have a neighborhood that has three or four or five distressed homes in it, that can really bring down housing values, as your assessor will tell you, in that neighborhood. And when we have so many of those in Hampton Roads, it puts downward pressure on housing prices. And while median sales prices are the highest since 2007, they're still low. And we're not, we don't expect to see a whole lot of growth happening in the housing market in the coming years. In order for us to see significant growth, we're going to have to see a bump in employment. We're going to have to see a bump in income. That's what would push housing prices up. Until then, we're going to see that green bar just kind of continuing forward. One of the things that's happened in Hampton Roads that you're all aware of is the number of military personnel that we lost. So if you go back in 2003, there are 113,400 uniformed military personnel in Hampton Roads. Right now, we have almost 30,000 fewer than we did in 2003. That's a 26% decline in military personnel. One of the things that should be in here is during this time, from 2003 to 2010, right, we saw this huge decline in military personnel. At the same time, the federal government kind of opened up and started shoving money into contracting, also very important enforcement. So for the long period of time here, we're losing personnel, but the federal government, it's like, on the one side, they're taking personnel, back on the other side, they're shoveling money into the economy through these contracts. And suddenly, sequester hit in 2011. And when the sequester hit, not only did they continue cutting the military personnel, now they're taking all the money out of the economy. And this is really what killed us, right? Because suddenly you have federal government pulling out, exacerbating the effects of cuts in military personnel. So that hurt us significantly. One of the things that you hear frequently in, in the press and around Hampton Roads is our need for diversification, right? And what I'm showing you right here, essentially, this is going back to 1969, 1970. In 1969, military, uniformed personnel were 26.4% of all employment. Today, it's 8%. In 1969, almost 40% of our economy was direct federal employment. Now we're about 13.7%, right? So this green shaded area here has shown significant increases in private sector employment, compared to the pink and blue, that's the federal sector. The regional economy has seen expansive growth on the private sector side historically. But one thing remains true is this is a real strong core of our economy. It's a foundational piece of our economy. So what we do like to see growth on the private sector, this is going to remain, continue to remain, a really strong component. And even though currently we have 13.7% of our employment is directly related to federal government, that 13.7% of employment is responsible for about 35% of the region's growth product. So that 13.7% still plays a huge factor, you know? And then, you know, when they say the federal government gets, you know, sneezes, Hampton Roads gets a cold, it's because it's so important, even though that, you know, it's not the 40% days of yore, it's still significantly important. Just a couple of other slides here. I included a few that we didn't have at our commission that have, that are specific to Portsmouth. What I just wanted to show you here is these pink lines are Hampton Roads, the green lines are Portsmouth. But here you can kind of see, how does Portsmouth measure up against Hampton Roads in terms of employment by industry? And when I said earlier, federal, federal government and the civilian side is so important in Portsmouth, here you can see how it compares to Hampton Roads. We have 23% of Portsmouth employment is in federal civilian versus just over 5% in Hampton Roads. You can see, also see, healthcare was Portsmouth Naval right there, military as well. So you can see some of these industries where Portsmouth is overrepresented, I shouldn't say overrepresented, it's just a different representation. And then in other areas, retail trade, so retail trade and other components, other areas of Hampton Road has a higher share of their employment than, than Portsmouth. Accommodation and food. Now, one thing that's interesting is retail trade and accommodation or food are two very revenue important components. So other regions in Hampton Road seeing a higher share of their employment go, going to that, might be somewhat important thing for Portsmouth to look at. When we look at 10-year employment change in Portsmouth, again, the federal civilian side has been very important to the Portsmouth economy because there's been significant growth there, healthcare, social services, professional, scientific, and technical, we've seen. On the other end, Portsmouth has been losing employment in manufacturing, construction, state and local employment. So here you can see kind of how things have changed over the past 10 years for Portsmouth.
I think I know the answer, but what do you include in the category information? All the IT?
Yeah, information services is all the data and IT. And a lot of that, you know, port logistics will be in there as well as business, some of the business services are also included in that as well. Looking at the Portsmouth unemployment rate, like I said, the number is less important than the trend. You know, when it was increasing, it's bad, but you can see, you don't want to necessarily compare Portsmouth rate to Chesapeake rate to Williamsburg rate, Williamsburg always looks really bad then. But it's essential to look at more of the trend, what's happening in the jurisdiction and Portsmouth trend is, is along the lines of every other region in Hampton Roads and we're seeing that consistent decline in the unemployment rate. That said, obviously, what happens outside of Hampton Roads is vitally important to Portsmouth. You may not know this, but 2/3 of the people working in Portsmouth don't live in Portsmouth. So the majority of your employment base comes from outside Portsmouth, the biggest of which comes from Chesapeake and then Virginia Beach and Norfolk. But you get people coming in to Portsmouth from all over the region. Conversely, if you look at the number of people who are working in Portsmouth, less than, only 45% of them actually reside here. So Portsmouth workers go up to the rest of the region. And that's why the regional economy is so important to each locality here. You know, what happens in Hampton Roads affects all these localities. It was kind of interesting years ago when Joint Forces Command closed, we were asked to do a study, Suffolk asked us to do a study because they wanted to tell everybody how much Suffolk was hurting from Joint Forces Command closing. And when we looked at the data, the number one region, the number one locality to be impacted by Joint Forces Command closing in Suffolk was Virginia Beach. The second reason, region, or the second jurisdiction was Chesapeake, followed by Norfolk, then Suffolk, then Portsmouth, right? So Suffolk thought they're getting the lion's share of the hit from this and suddenly Virginia Beach is like, wow, we need to do more stuff for JIFCOM in Suffolk. But when you look, we call this the spaghetti map. If you can count the lines, I'll be impressed. But essentially Hampton Roads is, is a function of kind of the state, right? When we compare Hampton Roads to other metropolitan areas between 1 and 3 million people, we rank third in terms of the number of people who live, who leave their jurisdiction of residence to go work somewhere else. Richmond's number one, right? Our state, the way we have constructed our state, has all these localities that are sometimes working together, but a lot of times competing against each other. And the reality is, you know, I mean, I'm in Portsmouth a lot. I don't look at the boundary when I cross into Portsmouth. You know, I happen to be in Norfolk here and Chesapeake there and Portsmouth there. And people don't think in terms of these boundaries when they're making, when they're shopping, when they're working. And that's just reflected really, I think, in this chart here. So anyways, looking to the year ahead, a couple of things to touch on, the good DOD pay increase plan. When I put this together, one of the frustrating things is, well, I'll just say, one of the frustrating things is Washington DC. We are so tied to the federal government, we have no idea what's going on up there. We have no clue. So I talked to Craig Quigley with Hampton Roads Military Federal Facilities Alliance, talked to him frequently. He has people working up there for him to try and give some insight into what we can expect out of Washington DC. We can't get any insight. We don't know what's going to happen from day to day. One of the huge things that came out of there though was the fact that they actually lifted the amount of money that they're able to spend and remove the limitations of sequester was a really, really, really significant step for Hampton Roads. Because essentially, it gave them the ability to spend 80 billion more dollars in the military this fiscal year, which ends in September, 80 billion more dollars. Essentially, if you took Hampton Roads' share of what typically gets spent in defense, that has the ability to increase our gross product by 3%, just that, our whole gross product. So the, the impact of removing the spending caps that they had in place is really important. We'll get two years of that. So they removed the spending caps for this year or next year?
The presentation.
Why this is so important, I think, is because essentially what it could do, if they actually put forth a bill, a spending bill, and they do appropriations, until they do appropriations, we're not sure how that money would be spent. we're not sure how that money would be spent. But they remove the caps, the next step is, let's get through this next CR, let's get appropriations bill. And we're not going to get no money, we'll get some money. But if we get a two-year reprieve from these sequester hits that we've had in Hampton Roads, that's going to give us some breathing room, and we'll see some growth in the economy. The cautionary tale, then, is when you say, let's go gangbusters in spending, and oh, by the way, we've just given everybody tax cuts, it doesn't take an accountant to figure out, at some point, you got to pay the piper, right? So money is going crazy at the federal level, we're seeing reduced revenues, and so deficits are going to balloon. And in two years, you're going to see huge ballooning deficits, right at the same time that you're going to have people up the polls voting to get people in place. So I think what we could expect to see is kind of a two-year hiatus and followed by some pretty return to where we were now, I think. Anyways, consumer spending's strong, we have continued low energy prices, we've become kind of used to that now, corporate investment is up, interest rates remain relatively low, they're starting to creep up, and relatively healthy global economy, the bad, like I just alluded to, we still have this uncertainty in Washington, we don't know what's going to happen there. Interest rates are finally actually starting to edge up, there's very limited upward growth potential in the housing market. So we don't, we know it's kind of flat, we don't expect it to, you know, we're happy it's not going further down, but there's just limited growth there. Still kind of dealing with weak productivity growth, and one of the number-one things that comes up in every national forecast is this increased risk of global conflicts. And everybody's seeing it, everybody's talking about it, we're not sure what's going to happen there, but the signs aren't there that everybody's getting along so well, and with that increased risk, that's going to generate uncertainty once again, which is bad for the economy. When we look at expected forecasts in gross domestic product, what we're looking at is relatively strong, I shouldn't say strong, relatively consistent growth. This black bar is historic average, we're not going to be at the historic average, but what we don't have, and I'll just jump to this real quick, we don't have this recession planned in. So people are talking about, well, when is the next recession? Since World War II, the average recession, that we've had a recession average every 58 months, so just shy of five years, every five. Right now, we've surpassed the five-year mark, we're at 8.5 years since the last recession. Of course, the recession we had was a doozy, so it's not going to be the same. There's nothing out there to suggest that we're going to see a recession in the next year, year and a half, two years. However, if we keep spending and we don't collect tax revenues, we overheat our economy. Right now, we have a pretty warm economy, and we're injecting money into it. That's one of those things that in two years, you might see me back here saying, we could have assumed that this would happen. However, next year and a half, two years, I think we're looking pretty good. Our forecasts that we delivered in, for the first time in February, we had a snowstorm in January, does not include the expected federal expenditures that would happen if they actually pass through an appropriations budget. So if they do pass the appropriations bill, and $80 billion is injected into the military, and we see that money come into Hampton Roads, that would significantly change these numbers that we have for Hampton Roads. But absent that, we don't know what that they're going to do, so we'll just go with the numbers we have. The national level, we expect a little bit increase, 2.8% growth versus 2.3 last year. We see interest rates are edging up, they are actually edging up. The reason I say that is for the past seven, eight years, every year, there's been a forecast for interest rates to grow, and they haven't, but now we are seeing it. Gross product in Hampton Roads, 1.3%. If we get federal expenditures, appropriations made in Hampton Roads, that could easily go up to 2% by the end of the year and above, if we see that money come through our economy. The civilian unemployment, or employment rate, we expect still just modest growth at 1%. Again, that number could shoot up significantly if we see expenditures there. The unemployment rate, the number not especially important, but a lot of what's going to determine this number is going to be what happens with our labor force. If we see people joining the labor force in growth, that could be great for the economy, and this number could come up. And so if we're pulling people back into the
Up or down?
It would go up. If we see people pouring into, the labor force pouring in. Now, if that's matched by jobs, then the number would go down, but I would actually like to see the number come up with people getting excited about going to work. Retail sales, 2.7%, relatively consistent with where we've been. Auto and truck sales, we forecasted a decrease last year, we saw the decrease, we're forecasting another decrease this year. This is nothing, not indicative of people's perception about large purchases as much as it is. We're seeing kind of a change in decision-making in when it comes to purchasing cars and trucks. At the same time, in 2015 and 16, we saw huge, huge growth in auto and truck sales, and there's some cyclical, there's a cycle to that, and so we're kind of coming off that cycle. Expect in 2019, those numbers to start edging up again. And finally, single-family residential building permits, again, we expect modest growth. This 8.5% that we saw last year came off a relatively weak 2016, but we expect that growth to be relatively modest. And that concludes the slides that I have. We have a [inaudible].
Awesome presentation, and it fits into our budget.
Do you have any data on the wages that we're seeing in the region?
Yes, I don't have any that with me today, but there is wage data, both by jurisdiction and for the region, we do have that available on our website. I could send a link to that. There's a study that we have there called the Regional Benchmarking Study, and it includes a lot of wage data in there.
And also, with Portsmouth having a uniqueness, having a majority African-American population, do you have data, particularly with employment, that disaggregates out by race?
No, we don't. They have that at the national level. Hampton Roads is somewhat of an anomaly when it comes to that, so it's, in some regions, you can take national-level data and kind of parse it down to the region and say, well, if we follow national trends, then we could assume X for our region. But Hampton Roads, because of the outsized defense presence, is very different than kind of a regular regional economy, so I would not want to take national data and apply it to Hampton Roads because I think that the data would be, would mischaracterize what's actually happening here. But unfortunately, to get that data, you know, you'd have to run surveys, and we don't have, we don't have that survey data. There is, however, census data, which is self-reporting, which does have some of that, but it's, you know, it's not quite as strong as the other data that we see from Bureau of Labor Statistics, the Bureau of Economic Analysis. So if we look at census data, that can tell you a little bit of that, and if you have specific questions, please, you know, I encourage you to just tell Dr. Patton, and I'd be happy to respond to them.
So is your data used to affect policy at the state level, is why this organization puts out information such as this to support policy changes?
Well, it's for a variety of reasons, actually. One of it, one of those things is to inform our board in the policies, decisions that they make, to bring the information to localities such as yourself, so that decision-makers can react accordingly. It has been used certainly for policy changes. You know, we brought some of this data to the attention of what they called the Golden Crescent, to make changes at state-level policy in terms of transportation and education funding, and we were effective in that regard the past two years. And so where we see the opportunity to take this data to affect change and to give it to people who are in position to affect change, the data is ready and there to go for them to use.
So this data was collected through, like, agencies, the Bureau of Statistic Labor?
So there, yeah, there's, on the bottom of each slide, it should say where the data comes from, some of it is internal analysis, but there's a variety of sources, some of it's from Census Bureau, Bureau of Labor Statistics, Virginia Employment Commission, Bureau of Economic Analysis, Department of Taxation, that kind of thing.
And I guess they didn't include any ages, he was, Whitaker was asking about salaries, but the ages, I guess specifically with the health purchases and the, on the low end, where the declines were with the furniture and other types of
So if you're looking for retail purchases by age cohort, I'm not aware of any national dataset that exists out there. I'm sure there's private datasets for purchase that could do some type of analysis, and that would be, again, based on going out and surveying people. But there is, the Census Bureau has some retail information, but it is not disaggregated as much by age cohort that I'm aware of.
Other comments? Thank you again.
Thank you, Greg. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, with it being at the 6 o'clock hour, we're going to reschedule the active shooter presentation because it's about a 30 to 35-minute presentation, so I'll be bringing that back to you. We're going to move forward with the offshore drilling overview because you do have an item on the agenda for your vote tonight referring offshore drilling. And Mr. Vincent Jones will present that.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, and members of council. This evening, we have a brief overview of the process for offshore drilling off the coast We frequently refer to this issue as offshore drilling, but the formal name is the National Outer Continental Shelf Oil and Gas Leasing Program. I know that's a mouthful, but we use the acronym OCS. The OCS Land Act, which has an interesting background, was actually enacted in 1953, and it established the organizational structure that guides the process for oil and gas exploration. And today, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management has responsibility, and they are developing the five-year program from 2019 to 2024. As you know, the Obama administration placed a moratorium on new exploration sites. It wasn't all, it was new. And one administration can change the program of another, but it has to follow the review process outlined by OCS. So in April of 2017, the President signed an executive order requiring a review of the most recent five-year plan. And that brings us to today. The process starts with a request for information, and then three public review periods, and counting the Request for Information, or RFI, we are in Phase Two of the four phases. How did we get here? Generally, state waters extend three miles from the shoreline. Beyond the three miles is under federal jurisdiction and subject to the appropriate international treaties in governing territorial and international waters. This means the issue of offshore drilling is managed at the state and federal levels of government. The OCS Land Act delegates the responsibility for managing this process to the U.S. Department of Interior and its secretary. However, the day-to-day oversight of the process is managed by the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management. And you can see that the Ocean, the OCS Land Act established that the outer continental shelf is a vital national resource, and it is to be held by the federal government for the public benefit. The impact to Hampton Roads, there are potential negative impacts to Hampton Roads, and that has raised concerns in Virginia and other East Coast states. The list before you is not comprehensive, but it identifies the major areas. Negatively impacting the Chesapeake Bay ecosystem, recently, the efforts to revitalize the Chesapeake Bay were recognized as an international model of success. Military training and readiness, we know that the waters off the coast of Virginia are used for military training and to make sure our military is ready in the event that their operations are needed. We have a growing aquaculture industry here in the state of Virginia, which is our seafood industry, and then tourism. All of these could be negatively impacted by an accident or drilling and the impacts of drilling off the shore of Virginia. So what happens next? As previously mentioned, we've just completed the second phase of the four-phase process. So as of last Friday, the second phase ended, which was March 9. After staff review, the info received during the second phase, the process will move on. And so I'll just briefly highlight those steps. The RFI was published back in July of 2017. There was a 45-day comment and submission period, and the RFI period really was for anyone, citizens, the oil and gas industry, to let the federal government know what concerns should be reviewed as they come up with a program for this oil and gas lease. That closed on August 17. So from that information, a draft proposed program was created, and that program was released on January 4. That then allowed a 60-day comment period for
That's what he
The draft-proposed program, which, just as I mentioned, closed on March 9. And so there was a four-and-a-half-month gap between that first RFI and the draft program being published. So after those comment periods close, the federal government staff will review the information, and they move on to the next step. So our next step will be, the proposed program is to be released along with a draft environmental impact statement. And once that's published, there will now be a 90-day comment period where we can, or anyone who is interested and concerned about those impacts, can let the federal government know what their concerns are. Once that 90-day comment period closes, the proposed final program will be released along with the final impact statement. And then it allows 60 days for Congress or the President to consider their program. Congress is not required to act on this, they certainly have the authority to do this. The President doesn't have to act, he has the authority as well. If not, the Secretary of Interior will sign a final program, which outlines the next step, which is, the program will be approved, and there will be a schedule of lease sales. And you can see, basically, they will come up with a schedule that just says, for all the different regions that they have identified where offshore drilling is possible, they identify the year of sales in that region. So for us in the mid-Atlantic, there will be two sales in that five-year period. In 2020, they will conduct a sale, and in 2024, they will conduct a sale, if in fact, Virginia is left in as part of the program. So even though a final program would be published, however, there will be several years of procedures and likely litigation before actual offshore drilling takes place. The plan for drilling has to go through a multi-year process of federal reviews and public comment, and if that's successful, then any production plan has to go through an additional review process as well. So this is why the region will have to remain aware of this process, so that we don't miss any opportunities to provide feedback in the near future as we move through this process. That concludes my overview.
Questions? Yes.
Has any area been excluded other than Florida?
We have not heard that any area has been excluded other than Florida, right?
It's the whole state of Florida, right?
Right. And they were, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Gerald.
Thank you.
Phil, Phil's got a question.
Yes.
We know the consequences if something goes wrong with the drilling, what are the, what's the economic impact?
Sure. Well, you know, that is actually the question. We know that there is economic benefit to this, and so the question is, how do you weigh those economic impacts with the possible negative impacts as well? And so because this area hasn't been explored, they have not put a number to that economic benefit, we know from 2016 what the economic impact was. And it's the oil and gas industry in total, not just our area, but in total around the nation, provides approximately 315 jobs, it adds about $30 billion to the U.S. economy. And the revenue from the oil and gas leasing program goes to the federal government. There is some now revenue sharing for states, but that's minimal, most of the money goes to the federal government. So it is a significant impact from the current industry. So it is a significant impact from the current industry.
Because it knows it's projected, there are 22 billion barrels of oil alone, not counting the natural gas, so that would, the revenue sharing would be based on production.
Sure. Right.
Other questions?
Thanks.
Sure.
All right, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, tonight you have before you five city manager's report items, and I'll go through those quickly. You have an adoption of an ordinance accepting aid to localities funding received during FY 2015 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs in the amount of $15,748, and appropriating the said fund in the grants fund for the use of the Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Services to support fire and emergency services in the city. I call to your attention that the city received this grant in 2015. However, City Council accepted and appropriated the estimated allocation at $286,920 from VDEM on September 9, 2014, to support the suppression in the Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Services. The actual allocation was $302,609, a difference of $15,748. With that said, the city must complete and submit an annual report for the Department of Virginia Fire Programs detailing the use of the funds, and appropriation must match the allocation received from the state. The second item is an adoption of an ordinance appropriating $43,529,573 by classification to the FY 2018 operating budget for Portsmouth Public Schools to implement the fourth quarter of the annual budget. The third item is an adoption of a resolution abolishing the American with Disabilities Commission. And under the Administrative Policy Number 21, ADA complaints from the public and city activities will be reviewed and are reviewed by the city's ADA coordinator, and decisions of the ADA coordinator will be appealed to the city manager, and this falls under our Human Resources Department. Fourth is an adoption of a resolution opposing offshore oil and gas exploration, including seismic testing and drilling. And our fifth is adoption of a motion to accept a donation from Spike's K-9 Fund to reveal various K-9 training obstacles at the Portsmouth Police Department facility located at 44 to Deep Creek Boulevard for police training dogs. That concludes the present, the city manager's report. You have in front of you Mayor and Members of Council two report backs, one on Effingham Street Improvement, and then there were four questions that were asked as it related to OPEB that are also provided on your report backs. With that said, Mayor, I'll yield to you.
Thank you, Dr. Patton, for the report back on the OPEB. I do have a question on the last item pertaining to the $3 million OPEB funds that I asked about. So over a three-year period, contributions were made in a total of 5.5 million?
This is what our research has shown.
Okay. And so why is it that the fund isn't 5.5 million?
I can't answer that, and if you notice here the information, and I'll read it. There was City OPEB General Ledger Fund account established before FY 2018. In the fiscal year 2009, 10, and 11, of which none of us were here, contributions were made to the fund account equaling 5.5 million. However, in FY 2015, which was not here, the OPEB General Leisure Fund was closed, and all monies were transferred to the Health Insurance Fund with 3.3 million designated as OPEB. So I made a disclaimer here. This information was researched and provided from historical records that exist in the Finance Department.
It looks like 2 million went into the Health Insurance Fund.
Yeah.
2.5.
Yeah, 2.5.
So those, so those funds should have been put into the OPEB fund, but they were trashed.
OPEB trust fund, or they were in a ledger fund?
Right, we don't have a trust fund.
No, so they were just in a ledger.
Right, so that's 2.5 that should have been there that's not there.
I would say if it was 5.5 and it's three there, I don't know and can't account for what and how.
Right.
Okay.
Because I know that the city, the city was asking the schools to move 3 million into the joint fund within the city, OPEB fund. But it looks like the city had enough without involving this, without involving the schools because 2.5 is missing.
I can't answer that, Dr. Whitaker. I can only provide what I have on this page.
On the, any more questions on that? On the Naval Hospital, any questions?
Yes. And Mr. Wright is here if there are any questions. We have a map. Don't you just come up, Mr. Wright, in case there are some questions that pertains to Effingham Street improvements? You asked for a map, and he has provided a map. And this fund, the funding for this project is under consideration for the FY 2019 capital improvement program. Are there any questions?
What's not on the map are the improvements to the top of the map to the north that are being made by the Navy, Wright?
Yes, sir, correct. There are two projects that they have. One, physically at the gate to expand the gate, and then some other access improvements interior to their, to their facility. So it's technically, it's three projects together.
So the yellow is the off base?
The yellow is the off base, correct.
So there are federal funds potentially that the Navy would have to take the lead on that?
Yes.
That's good.
And there is communication with the Navy in that regard.
Okay. Any more questions? All right. Yes, sir.
I guess a few weeks ago, I requested, prior to the budget, that we have a, I guess, update on our intern program?
Yes, we can bring it.
That came about, with some publicity around an intern that had some legal troubles. I just want to assure that what that program is and people entering it or being vetted, I was all taken back that the age of that intern, I guess when I was thinking when that intern program was established, it was for, you know, early college students or even high school students doing a summer program.
We have both high school students and college students. We'll get the report back, a presentation from HR on it as a summary.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
The issue with the snow removal, I know Mr. Moody brought it up, the five days that we were basically locked in. The proposals that were submitted, one of them dealt with involving subcontractors. And I'm just curious, for that, there are figures there, but wouldn't that be something that we would want to open up for, be it, because there were quite a bit of contractors in the area cleaning up privately? And I'm just curious, the figures that you had represented in the subcontractor figures, they may not be accurate because we don't know what a subcontractor might be willing to do the work for.
When we have used contractors in the past, this past and last year, we actually were part of the state process in securing those contractors that came in to deal with the removal of snow. We have not put out a bid, well, you couldn't, we couldn't put out a bid to try to get snow removal contractors once snow starts. So across the state and most of the cities in Hampton Roads tie into the state's contractors to bring those who are already a part of snow removal entities into your city. So that's what we've used for the past two years.
So, so we, but evidently with this past snowstorm, we didn't use...
Yes, we did.
Well, I guess...
We didn't bring in as many, but we brought them in.
I guess the issue raising, we don't know what type of storms will come, but isn't there a process where we should at least have enough contractors on hand where we don't have to be idle for five days and people are out of work?
We were not idle for five days. Our contractors came in the night...
I'm talking about the citizens who couldn't get out.
No, I'm saying the contractors for the snow removal, this storm that you're talking about came in actually the night before the storm, before the weather even started. They were here from different parts across the state, that the state directs them where to come. And so we're on top of bringing them in in the contract. It appears that the question had been asked, what would be the cost for every secondary, every major corridor of our city during a storm, which is, I sit here right now, you probably saw, Mr. Ash, pass something to me. We just got word that we're expecting more snow tonight that can go through tomorrow. I look out the window, I see sun, but we just got a report from Justin Arnold and an alert from the National Weather Service. So as that alert has just gone out, that alert goes to Mr. Collier and his team, so they will begin to preparing probably within the next 30 to 40 minutes of scheduling. Now, with this kind of weather, this short weather, we would not bring contractors in because it was all melted by, most of it this morning, but our teams were able to handle it.
No, this was, this was an extreme circumstance.
This one?
The one that...
Last night?
No, not last night, but the previous. And I'm just curious why we wouldn't involve contractors to get these secondary streets cleaned?
The cost.
Right, you know, that's my whole point. We haven't bidded it out. You said we'd go through the state.
We are part of the state's contract. The city would not bid out and has not bid out, and I don't know of any city to get amassed contractors with trucks and everything. We're following with our procurement officer, a process that has worked. If we need to bring in more, which would mean the city wants 100 trucks to come in, then there is a cost that is associated with that.
So does it have to go through the state?
Yes, it does. It's a state contract.
No, I'm saying, but do we have to legally go through the state?
I have to talk with the, I will talk with the procurement officer, I can't answer that.
Monday, our next two weeks from now is your presentation on the budget.
It's 26.
We're not going to meet on Tuesday because it's Holy Week.
Right.
Can we schedule this discussion on the first meeting in April?
We can bring something back, Doc.
Yes. And the question is, can we subcontract? And if we can, does it make sense to have a, either a pre-qualified list or go through the bidding process so that if the storm hits, that's what you're...
We're there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can bring them back again.
So let's schedule this if that's okay with everybody for the, excuse me, the first Monday meeting.
That's the 9th, April 9.
Then we're ready for next season and hope we don't have to use it this year.
Well, we hope you don't have to use it tonight.
Good discussion. Very quickly, Council liaison reports. No change.
No. Just the, Council, Will Burke and I were in the liaison school board meeting, and the major two issues, the OPEB fund and the risk management. The OPEB fund, the school does not appear to be willing to shift the 3 million over to the city. And I think we all left on one accord that by not shifting those funds, that would not interfere with the new school CIP being in the next budget season. Is that, is that understanding that?
Correct. Wasn't going to affect it going into this budget, but it had to 2019 to 2025, a five-year period, where they couldn't look at that, the CIP budget, is what I wrote. So they thought that the, it was being leveraged, that was their concern, that, okay, so if we don't give you the $3 million to store your OPEB fund, will we be pretty much leveraged our ability to not get a school built? But there is a five-year period where we could look at it through the budget for the CIP period, so...
Well, this is not already used.
Right, well, in particular, they just want to make sure that the A and E was not being leveraged on the 3 million. That is, if they don't move the 3 million, then the A and E will not be part of the CIP in this upcoming budget, and...
Still a moot point.
For the public's benefit, I mean, we were unanimous last night to go with the VML Veeco, so this is not an issue.
No, no, it is an issue that the A and E figures for the school is not included in this upcoming, it's going to put, the issue was, would this put the architectural and engineering into the next budget? And Patton and I think Superintendent left with the understanding that that would not be the case, that the architectural and engineering would be included in the upcoming budget.
Dr. Whitaker and Members of Council, in that meeting, the question was asked the same which Dr. Whitaker shared. I shared with the group or the committee that as city manager in preparing the budget, OPEB is over here and the CIP is over here, and that I am not mixing anything. I have two different areas, and I will present to council on the 26, that which is a part of the CIP, and we have fixed the OPEB. And I made that comment in there that, you know, there was, we hope it's no this or that, it's not that. I am preparing a budget, and I have none of that in my conscious of what I'm working on.
Right, so the, so the A and E would be included...
I can't speak to what's in my budget, I'll present it on the 26.
See, that's what I'm saying, that's not what was presented at the meeting. This is the second year now where you have one conversation in the liaison meeting, and then when we get back to council, it's different.
It is the proposed budget, I will present it on the 26.
We were, it was very specific, it was, and that was the issue, the leveraging, I want to leverage the CIP with the OPEB funds. And I think it was pretty clear that that wasn't going to happen. I think the confusion is coming because, once again, and I mentioned it last year, if we're going to be the liaisons, then Mr. Rowe cannot be negotiating with the school board on OPEB.
You're giving me more credit than...
No, the email that was sent to Mr. Parent, the issue I'm raising, you already mentioned in an email that if that CIP money, if the OPEB money is not shifted to the city, that the A and E would be pushed out into another budget year. Now, I have the email where you said that.
I'll be glad to give you the email.
Yeah, so, I'm just, my point is, why are you, as the mayor, the council has not directed you to negotiate?
If you want to run for mayor, do it.
That's not it. You're running for mayor, it's an issue that I think you are representing the council, when you have been authorized to do that. Council hasn't authorized you to speak on behalf of council as far as...
The people of Portsmouth authorized that, Dr. Whitaker.
No, they did not.
Yes, they did.
Dr. Whitaker.
The people, the people of Portsmouth do not put us on committees, do not direct council action. And so to make a statement as far as what we're going to do in a budget to the chair of the school board, and council has not authorized it, I think that's out of line.
You're misconstruing that, Dr. Whitaker. And, no, wait a minute, I'm going to speak. First, that meeting was requested by the chairman of the school board and Dr. Bracy, not me. Okay, that's, that's the first. There was no discussion at all, none, about leveraging OPEB. There was a discussion about bringing both entities into one trust. That was the discussion. That discussion was put to bed last night when we had a 7-0 consensus that we're going to go with VML and Veeco. You're making an issue of nothing because it's not there.
No, that's, I understand, I agree with you, I agree with you that we did vote...
Then let's move on.
No, 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 I agree that we did vote on how the city OPEB would be handled. That's not what I'm discussing. I'm talking about the architectural and engineering CIP that the schools felt was being leveraged. If they did not transfer those funds, then the A and E would be pushed out into a future budget year, not to next budget year. And that's what you communicated in your email that would happen if they did not. And I don't think you're authorized to make that statement to them because that was counter to what was discussed during the school board meeting. And I'm, I'm not trying to be erratic or anything, I'm just pointing... And I'm, I'm not trying to be erratic or anything, I'm just pointing out that what was said in the meeting and what you said in your email are contradictory.
You're wrong.
And I think, well, I'll.
You're wrong. And the chair, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session, because we need to move on.
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7, the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city, specifically regarding application of Wheel Abraider Portsmouth Incorporated for review and correction of assessment of the value of property, subject to local taxation for tax year 2017, case number PST 2017-00022, and Virginia International Gateway Incorporated versus City of Portsmouth, Virginia, Portsmouth Circuit Court Case Number CL 16001427-00, and Virginia International Gateway Incorporated versus City of Portsmouth, Virginia, Portsmouth Circuit Court Case CL 15002813-00.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Is that a good?
Any discussion or question? Clerk, will you call the roll case?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor.